This is the November 3, 2014, meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute to flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the journal of the meeting held on October 27, 2014.
All in favor, all opposed. So vote. In honor of the late Mayor of Boston, I would ask the City Council to rise for a moment of silence, please.
Calendar item number one, hearing called is ordered upon the establishment of the minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2015.
Mr. Rayivana, Mr. Brangerfordi, and Mr. Varengia.
My name is Andrew Rayivana. I'm chairman of the Board of Assessors, Joseph Roade Revere. Along with me are John Varengia, assessor, and Dana Brangerfordi, assessor. We are here tonight to ask the City Council, we're actually asking for three different votes. The first one being the minimal residential factor to be authorized at the maximum allowed by law with 175 percent shift, which the council has done each and every year. Any questions?
Continue.
Therefore, I will go on to the second vote that we will need, and that is a vote of the council to authorize, as they have done each and every year, the additional real estate exemptions to persons who are qualified under Section 5 of Chapter 59. And the third one, again, is the COLA for 2015 of 1.37 percent for certain exemptions under Section 5 of Chapter 59. Those are the three votes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Andy, what growth factor are you using in this year's established in the tax rate?
Which factor?
What do you have for growth this current year?
Oh, for growth. Our growth was $435,000.
Okay, yeah. That's for the current year, right?
That is for tax year 2015, correct.
If a building is being constructed, when is it going to tax well?
Well, what we use is January 1 preceding the tax year is as the tax date, so it's full and fair market value as of that January 1 preceding the tax year.
Partially built businesses, they will not be taxed, will they?
If they were partially built or if they were permitted, for example, on January 1, they would be, that part of them would be included in the taxes.
The part, okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the $400,000, $500,000 in growth that Councilor Haas had mentioned or asked about, is that what we consider new growth?
Yes, that is, $435,000 is growth, new growth, correct.
New growth, like new growth on DOR worksheets, I know they separate out new growth.
Exactly.
Okay. So the question that I have is that, and it may not be for you, Andy, but the question I will pose is that we have projected approximately 1.1 million in new growth at our, the financial summit that we had last year. So I, and it may be more of a question for our Director of Finance, but what factors kind of play into our, us not hitting a projection of 1.1?
Well, I would say that more than likely it is what we just talked about, what is there on January 1 preceding the tax year. You may have projected the $1.2 million, $1.4 million in growth, but perhaps for whatever reasons it was delayed, it wasn't, it didn't occur prior to January 1, and therefore we did not tax it.
Okay, all right. I don't know if the, if the council wants to hear from the Director of Finance on that, or if, I know we're going to have a discussion about the budget as a whole, so, you know, that may be a question, but it's good to hear what the exact number is for '15.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Rigo. Anybody else? I would simply say on, on new growth, I'll just make one example, and that's Market Basket. Didn't come online until yesterday or whatever, so I'm sure that was a big piece of.
I think Market Basket was there, though. The fact that they just opened yesterday really had nothing to do with the growth of the real estate.
Oh, okay, all right.
Because they've been there for the last two years.
All right, so then you're going to have to give me some other examples.
Well, I'll give you an example. I'll give you an example of Vanguard Apartments, for example.
What's that?
Vanguard Apartments.
Okay.
That you were building 194 units.
Right.
What happened is that land was exempt because it was government-owned, so when Vanguard bought it and got a permit for 194 units, we assessed the land at $40,000 per unit for approximately $8 million. That was growth. So although the apartments weren't built, the permits were there on January 1, so therefore highest and best use saying that there were going to be 194 units at a cost, land cost of $40,000 per unit in that area, okay? And as you go through the city, land costs are different, so, but that was growth. That $8 million was growth, part of the $435,000, $435,000, well, let me say it this way, that would have been $120,000 in taxes, part of the $435,000 in growth.
That's a very nice example. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Councilor Riordan.
So following up on that, Andy, at what point would the fair market value of the actual structure come on as new growth? Now, you described $40,000 per unit for the, the, the land cost. They get the permit, you, 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 once they get the permits to do that, you assign that value, correct?
Exactly.
At what point do you assign the value, the full fair market value of the entire?
What is completed as of January 1 of this year will be assessed in value for 2016. So I would presume this being November, I mean, they're partially there, they're not yet completed, they may be 60 percent complete by January 1, then we would assign not only the $40,000 in land value, but perhaps another $150,000 per unit of those apartments, and we would say, well, if they were 60 percent complete, then we would use 60 percent times the 150 plus the land, and that would be the recession for '16, presuming that they are actually complete by tax year 2017, then it would be the 150 plus the 40.
Well, let me ask you this, then. I guess that begs the question, how does one determine whether they're 60 percent complete?
Yeah, we, in fact, within our evaluation process, have schedules of what is done if the foundation is there, if the outside walls are done, that all leads to percentages. So we have, we have formulas to determine that.
And if the, if the, the development should be complete and the actual units go on the market in the interim, at what point does that change? In other words, in the interim between your January 1 date and sometime thereafter?
Again, the law says the value is the full and fair market value of the January 1 preceding the tax year. So we, we have an opportunity using a mechanism referred to as the Hopkinton decision, which happened way back, I think, in the, in the 1990s, probably, where we could increase the value of certain properties that were more complete on June 30.
Right.
So, I mean, that would be a case where, and that whole Hopkinton decision came out of the, the growth along 128, if you will, when there was a lot of building going on. So Hopkinton went to the state and asked that they valued property as of June 30 in certain cases for that, and we can use that mechanism in certain cases.
Well, I would think with 194 units there and 100 and whatever number down at so-called Run the Flats, there might be some impetus to do that.
And we look at those things all the time.
Thank you, Andy, very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilor Riordan, Councilor Powers. Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the council's verification and those watching at home, over and above the 194 units, those foundations that are being constructed down there now, are they part of the 194 units or are they part of the next phase? And if so, what part of that will be taxable in January?
Well, the foundations that are going in, I think, are for the 194 units.
That's all, just for the 194 units?
That's right.
Okay.
There was another project going on also on Ocean Ave, the Optin Project.
Yep.
Where they just, last month, purchased the land to do another project there.
But there's no construction down there?
There's no construction as of yet, although we did receive some tax.
So all we see, all we see going on down there now is the 194 units, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor Powers, Councilor Guanasso.
So in terms of assessing, placing and assess value on a property, is there different terms for rentals versus condos? Meaning that, I would think that you, when we're selling, when they're selling a condo, it's point of sale, that drives the base for assessment. How do you differentiate the two, whether it's from rentals versus sale?
Condos are based on sales, so whatever, however the, those individual condominium units are selling will form the basis for what the values are in that, in that particular development or in that area.
Square footage.
Well, square footage being the basis of how one condo differs from another condo, if you will, in that same unit. But each unit, each condominium development will have its own neighborhood code, so-called, assigned to it, and again, it's all based on seals. And then the seals within the unit itself break it further down by square footage. So if somebody has 1,000 square feet in, in a certain development, they will pay one price, somebody has 800, they will pay something a little less than that.
Understandable. Now, in the 194 units, which we know they're going to be rentals, is it based on the income that's driven by that property, by that sale?
That's, that's part of it, the income of the unit.
Income of each apartment.
The expenses, a capitalization rate, all of those things. And unlike condominiums, it's not necessarily driven by sales, but driven by an income approach.
Okay. That's the same thing as if you had a three family or four families, the same, same principle?
Three families are usually driven by sales.
Okay.
When you get up to the over eight units, that's usually driven by income approach.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. We kind of went a little out of, out of order here, so I'm going to now close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Okay, so now that we did the questions and we've got three items to vote on, calendar item number one, two, and three, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct. But I believe.
Mr. Director of Finance, can we have you up at the podium for a minute, please? Is the clerk correct? Good evening. Is clerk corrected, we have to take up calendar item number three in conjunction?
We have, you have to take up calendar item number three, which is the relative final appropriation to the 2015 budget, because when we put the tax recap sheet together and all the forms that have to do with the tax rate, we included these appropriations because they're necessary for the operation of the city going forward into 2015. So that, that also has to be taken up tonight, and the other most important thing, one of the most important things is the fact that the City of Revere became part of what they call a TAP program, which is a Taxpayer Assistance Program with the Department of Revenue, because we want to set and have a early setting of a tax rate. Last year, we set the tax rate on the December 9th, this year, we're looking to do it a month early. And the reason we got involved with that program and the reason, and my department has worked a little harder in order to get it done, and they all have to give them all credit, the Board of Assessors, the City Auditor, the City Madam Clerk, and myself have been meeting in order to get this, and we have meetings with the DOR and with amongst ourselves to get this done on a quick basis. It's a program that was started by Ramon Nunez of the DOR, and they asked us to be involved, and we want to participate in these programs because it gives us a good relationship with the DOR. And one of the reasons, if you, as you look at it, is that when we came down, time to the tornado, we have excellent relations with the Department of Revenue that were very helpful in getting us the laws and everything we needed passed in order to get assistance in here as far as getting our, the appropriate measures passed so that we could continue with the, with the repairs. So that does have to be passed tonight, and we're looking for passes tonight along with the certification of the LA 5, because again, we want to, once this vote is taken and the votes and the appropriations is taken, we can start submitting our tax rate to the DOR to get their approval. And we, as I said, we're on the fast track and we're doing it because the DOR wanted to do this because cities and towns, they have 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts all applying for their tax rates, and they all seem to do it in November, in December, and when it's crunch time, and they said, let's see if we can spread it out, let's see if we can get cities and towns to cooperate with us so that our workload isn't overburdening our staffs, and so that's why we got involved, and that's why it's so important that gets passed tonight.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Riordan, in terms of the appropriations, are we, so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to vote on those tonight? We're not going to send those to committee?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I ask a couple of questions about the $500,000 that we're about to spend?
Yeah, I don't think we're quite there yet, though.
It sounded like we were calling the roll.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm sorry.
All right.
We're just, we're trying to get all the things on the table.
Okay.
When we get to that, we'll, we'll go back to that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Calendar item number two, this is regarding the communication from the Board of Assessors requesting acceptance of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986 as amended by Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988 and a cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2015. Calendar item number three, communication from the mayor relative to final appropriations to the fiscal year 2015 budget.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Mayor, do you want to come up? Or do you want to, I suppose there's going to be some questions here, you want to field them?
Mr. President, you know, obviously, I'm here to answer any questions.
Right.
That the council may have, but I think, I think you're, you're all in good hands right now with my Director of Finance.
Correct.
And our Board of Assessors here, so.
Okay.
You have the communication in your packages, so it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward and self-explanatory.
Okay.
To get answered questions.
All right, I guess, Councilor Rigo, now you can ask your question.
Thank you, Mr. President. In our '15 budget, we, we had a section that was laid out for the Regional Emergency Communication Center, and some of the footnotes had mentioned expenses being shared with Winthrop. So I didn't know, of the 200, is the $270,000 that we're going to approve or that you're asking us to approve tonight, is that for a half of the fiscal year for, for the '15 costs?
Okay.
How does, I just wonder how that breaks down?
Okay. What happened is, is that there's a total budget for the rec center that was put together by the board that's in charge of it. It's a totally separate entity, it was passed as a separate entity under the legislation. We're in the process of getting the interministerial agreement to have the same agreement, and there'll be one put before you, which the board is voting on, I believe, this week, with the proper changes in it so that it allows the center to be much more operative than what it had before, because when it was signed way back when under the previous administration, what happened was is that they didn't take into account that, one, it was a separate entity, and the previous administration, previous IMA actually had them as City of Revere employees, which they're not going to be. So with that and some other areas of retirement and workforce comp and unemployment, we're taking care of those issues and the governance issues of the IMA with myself and, well, basically through the police chief and the fire chief, Joe Cafarelli and Gene Dougherty. They've been working on this project for a number of years, it finally is coming to tuition, we are looking, fruition. We are looking at February 1 as a start date. The way it's broken down, the state has given us a grant, the, if I'm not mistaken, the last time I looked at the budget, was about $1.5 million for the budget. The state E911, I believe, gave us 450 or 500,000, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it was about that, but the City of Revere share is actually 950,000. It's going to be, they do it by the number of calls taken, it's a 75-25 split, basically. So the City of Revere is picking up 75 percent, and the Town of Winthrop is picking up 25 percent. So with that, we took off of that amount, the number of months that it takes to run the rec center. We have in the budget monies for call takers and dispatchers of both the police and the fire. What will happen is, the way we plan to work is that, well, in February 1, from February 1 to June 30, we'll need that additional amount of 270,000 in order to have the rec center open and work for those number of months. The other part of it, too, is, is that, looking at it, is that we also have monies in, in those accounts for both the police and the fire. The expectation is that this 270,000 will be our contribution for now, and then the remaining amount of what's left of the police and the fire appropriations that were done for 2014, '15, rather, that a remaining amount will be transferred into an account so that we can then send that to the rec center. However, it'll be much more clear in next year because the rec center will be opened, it'll be working, and it has been quite a chore. And I have to give my compliments to Chief Joseph Cafarelli and Gene Dougherty for the amount of work they've done and the, their knowledge about public safety together is very impressive. I think that the city owes them quite a bit of thanks for the work they've done and gratitude, and it was great for me to work with them and somewhat be part of this. So looking at it, again, that's the amount what they were looking for, and that's how we plan to fund it. Next year, again, the police and fire chief will be applying for another E911 grant. The advisory board made, is made up of the two chiefs of executives of the city, so that's Mayor, Mayor Dan Rizzo, and the town administrator of Winthrop, and Jim McKenon, and then there's the two police chiefs, one from each city, two fire chiefs, and then there's a seventh member, and the seventh member will be chosen first by the Town of Winthrop, and it'll be employee of the Town of Winthrop, and it'll be alternating years, and the first, the second year will be the, somebody from the City of Revere. And what makes the rec center work is, one, the professionalism it has in order to dispatch and take calls. I mean, the level we're at now and the training these people have already gone through, I know that the, a number of them have already taken the EMD course and have the certification in that, which we didn't have before, and I, just, just be far more professional and less mistakes being made. One of the, when we went through the purchasing of the software for this, we, both chiefs, both the then-police chief, Terrence Rinn, and President Fire Chief is Eugene Dougherty, had asked for, separately, had asked for the same thing. They wanted protocols so that when an incident is called in, what would happen is the protocols would come up for what questions they ask and where they go from there. And, and you know, this is very important to the city because, one, the incident is being, that's taking place, is being handled much more professionally, and that the answers go on the computer and it tells, you know, the operator right away what's the next step to go. And the other part of it, too, is also saves the city from liability. Most importantly, the incident is being handled correctly, but the second part of it is, it saves the city from liability. Now, they're also searching for another partner to come in, or another stakeholder to come in and be part of our rec center, and every time we get a new person into the, another city or town into the rec center, our costs drop because of the fact that the costs are shared by number of calls. We have the people hired that we're going to hire, so the next stakeholder will take on according to the amount of calls, so our percentage may not, probably won't be 75 percent, but probably be something much less. So the costs will go down, and plus, I believe, the grant may go up a little bit. So that's one of the reasons what, what we're looking at for the rec center.
And so, so in short, the 270 is.
I thought that was very brief.
In short, the 270 is, is five months of operation, and this will require a $950,000 investment next year, correct?
If, that would be correct.
Okay.
If in the event that we don't have some, another city or town come in, and I understand there may be other cities and towns that are interested. Once we set up, once we get there, I think there'll be another city and town coming in, and I'm not promising it, I think the both police chief, police and the fire chief have a better handle on that, but I do think that, you know, again, that the costs will drop. And we don't know how much the grant is going to be next year, I think once we get it started, the state of E911 is going to look at it and say, okay, you've got something started, you've got something going, they've been waiting on this, it's, I mean, this has been a process three or four years old, and I think it's one that's ready to get started.
And, and in terms of where this money's coming from, you know, we just heard about our new growth being lower than expected, will, will this, will this appropriation or these appropriations, will these put us in tighter spot if our revenue is coming in lower than what, what it is showing? I mean, we, right now, we projected 1.1 for new growth, we're talking $400,000,000, and then for '16, we got 1.6 booked for new growth, and if we don't, you know, it doesn't sound like we're even going to come close to the 1.1 projection. So I just wonder, knowing that in '16, this is going to cost 950,000, which is, you know, almost 700,000 more than it's costing us now, with revenue declining and, you know, this appropriation increasing, I just wonder what the, you know, where the money's coming from this year, and then where we're going to, where we're going to be able to identify the money going, going forward?
Well, it's not 700,000 difference, and I'll tell you why, because I explained that, maybe I didn't explain it clearly. One is the fact that we already have implanted into the budget call takers and dispatchers for the police and fire. The, I believe there's somewhere in the area of 380,000, 400,000 that are in those accounts. So we're going to start at 380,000, 400,000, I'm asking for 270, or the mayor, the city's asking for 270, so, you know, looking at that, you're looking at 870, so you're looking at a difference between the 870 and the 950, okay? And that's not going to put us on that type of a schedule as far as our revenues. We're looking at, as far as revenues are concerned, I don't think we have a problem when our revenue is coming in because as we look at page three of the recap sheet, I think we've hit, well, we will be hitting all of our goals, there'll be no revenue deficit for fiscal year 2015, we're tracking them, and we don't see any reductions in revenue. And you have to remember, what we took into account in 2015 was a pretty big hit. We took into account on page three of the recap sheet, the excise taxes, and Thrifty, as you know, moved out of the city. That was an $850,000 hit that we took. We, further, they have agreed to register some cars here, and it's going to give us about approximately another 300,000, so there was a loss of. about approximately another $300,000. So, there was a loss of somewhere, well, there was a loss of some $550,000. So, we were able to absorb that, both with the amount of our 2.5% increase, and also with the new growth figure that we had. You know, we're talking, and I've heard the council discuss this, we're talking about, you know, exactly where in place are the, which is a great, great question, it's our great questions. Where are they going to land on this development? Where is it going to land on our recap sheet? So, when are we actually going to be taking advantage of this new growth that's happening in the city? I have sat, I have talked to the Board of Assessors, I've talked to the Economic Development Director, John Fessa, the Head of Community Development. We're going to have a sit-down and talk about exactly where can we place these, first of all, what new growth is going on in the city, and what the plan is, and exactly, with the Board of Assessors' assistance, tell us exact, when, or the amount that would, we can project forward would be part of our new growth. So, that's something we're, an exercise that we're going to do, and that we plan to do. So, that'll be most helpful, both to city planning, and when we report to the financial markets, and also to report to the city council. So, that's something that's ongoing. So, that's, again, an exercise that we plan to do.
And then, just finally, on the $117,000 that needs to be appropriated due to the 40U program, it sounds like there was some, some issues with our process, and I just wonder what, what happened, basically?
Okay, yeah, okay. It wasn't the total $117,000. There's a letter from the MIS Director, Mr. Glendarosa, and what occurred. The maintenance contract that we have with our, one of our vendors, who does the maintenance on the hardware and the, say, for example, we have any internet problems, or any software problems, and all the, the operating systems, if we have any problems with the operating systems, came back with a quote last January, and that's when we set our budget, and there was an amount of $56,000. So, when it came in Ju-, July, they were looking for their money. And they said, you know, something, you know, we're not, we can't fund you this. It's, it's a matter of, it's a matter of that we need our money in order to keep, continue doing the work. So, what happened at that time was, is that, you know, upon discussion, saying, well, you only told us this amount, but, you know, costs go up in that meantime, and, you know, on that part of it, there's nothing, a mistake was made. It's just that we set up, again, in January, and there were certain things that got added on from, that had to be maintained, as far as the operating software, operating software is concerned, for the systems. And then what happened is, is that, that's how it came out to the 56331, and that's why that's an exact figure. There was an invoice for that amount that was paid. The 40U program, which is a ticket system for the city, the city, it's a new law that allows the city to, on inspectional services, to hand out a ticket under the 40U, which actually has some teeth in it. So, if there is a piece of property that is not living up to its code, or not being up, kept up, what happens is, is that the city is now able to give them a ticket, and then there's other legal ramifications along the road. In fact, I believe the city council is going to be asked, is being developed now, a new city ordinance in order to implement that. And rather than going to court, there's going to be a hearings officer involved, and they can appeal that to court. But, you know, it has a process, has much more teeth in it. When we went out there and looked at the software packages, the problem with the software packages that were, that were out there, it's a new law, people had all those glitz, and it looked great, the glitz. So, everybody looked, wow, that's pretty good, and that's pretty good. Well, you know something? It involves a lot of offices. It involves the inspectional services, data from the inspectional service department. It involves the data from the Board of Assessors. It involves data from the collector's office, data from the treasurer's office, and when a, a ticket is issued, it's issued, and it can now go on as a tax lien to the tax bill. Whereas before, it would just go on, and you try to collect it, and so on and so forth, and it can become a problem. So, with that, city's implementing that, we actually had to sit down and design a sys-, a soft piece of software that had integration involved with it. So, now we have probably the only, as far as we know, I know there was a meeting of inspectional services personnel throughout the state down in Worcester, maybe four months ago, and what we got back from that was, they go to a point, and then it becomes manual. And at that time, that's when mistakes can be made, because, you know, this is such a fast-moving system, whereas after so many days, a ticket is issued, it now can be forwarded, and a lien put on that property immediately after a certain time period. So, daily, we're now wanting to put liens on pieces of property, not like we do, if you have a water lien, or a health code violation lien, we can put, we put them on in the second, should the third quarter tax bill in December. This is going to go on lien immediately at the time of the expiration of the certain, I believe the time period is 30 days. So, in order to keep track of that, I don't know how other cities and towns keep track of it, but, you know, there was no glitz there. We needed the, a hard-working system, so we knew it. And there's been a lot of people involved with this. There's David Krasnov in the mayor's office, there's the, James Bojewell Law Firm, there's Glendarosa, the MIS Director, there's myself, and there's Nick Catnazzo and the Inspection Services team. We've been working on this for a number of years under the direction of Mayor Rizzo, and it has been quite a process. But we, we are going to actually have the only integrated soft piece of software, because this will go into, and it's done by the same company that does our software for, the govern software, which is in the collector's and the treasurer's office, and is possibly used in the assessors' office. So, with all of this integration, that's the reason why we use it.
So, in terms of the $56,000 price change on, on the quote that we got from, from one of our vendors, how much of an increase, percentage-wise, was that on the contract?
Well, it was, it wasn't a total percentage of the increase, because there were some things left off when he gave the quote. And that was part of the problem. He left off, which Glendarosa actually found, and said, well, wait a minute, you don't have this covered, and you don't have that covered. And they had to go back and say, okay, we have to give you coverage for that, because we want to make sure, sure, for example, that our system is secured, and has the proper security system, so that people can't get into our files, can't get into our payrolls, can't get into our, well, you're never going to say can't in this world when it comes to computers, but that's, we've got it as best we can.
George, what was the amount that we were originally paying the vendor?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, all right.
But the increase probably is maybe, let me finish. I think the increase probably maybe is less than 10%.
Okay, that's okay. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Rego, Counsel Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I went any longer, Judge, I was going to sleep, but, no, you did a great job. You had very elegantly everything you said. Unfortunately, I knew 90% of it. Wish I didn't, so I tried to stay awake during it. But you answered part of my question about the reduction in call takers that are already there getting paid. And I don't want to say aren't professionally, but not as educated and attuned to, you know, year 2014, the stuff that goes on, the stuff they have to know, and everything, and now they're certified. But the other question is, and, which I think is one of the biggest pluses, is the police and fire, and I hope it happens when it's all said and done, that they're actually going to gain people out in the street, or the police officer, instead of in an office, you know, working with the call takers, or in the building. I'm not saying that they go out in the street, but whatever. But you're going to gain extra personnel, and their professionalism as a fireman or a policeman.
Right.
So, I mean, that's just an added plus to that. The one other court thing I wanted to bring up, and you're going to have to answer that, I just wanted a clarification for the public for that. The one other thing with the $117,000 MIS, that, I know I've been waiting for a long time. We're going to probably get that back tenfold at the end of the day, because Chelsea, when we write a ticket over, certainly it goes to Chelsea Court, Chelsea Court's basically getting all that money. City Revere's getting nothing out of it. So, we're writing tickets, we're doing all the work, all administrative work, and we're getting really nothing out of it. This money will stay in the city, you know, have a board of, that hears these hearings. So, I think we'll get that money back tenfold. I actually can't wait for that to go into effect. It's been a long time coming. I know you've been working on it for a long time, but I'm actually looking forward to it. At least it's in-house, it's not in another city. Unfortunately, we don't have a court, but this is something, one part of it, we can take back to the city, is the thing. So, I'm looking forward to that, and, you know, if it costs extra money for something like that, you're going to make tenfold, I'm all for it. But you did do it very elegantly, even though we get these communications and information, and I see it on a fairly good basis. But thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Penta.
We will make a, put a bit of revenue from this, and other cities and towns have that are smaller than us, but at the same time, the process will be a lot quicker for us to process. And that is a good point, Counsel.
Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. George, in all these expenditures, where are they coming out of? Where's the funds coming out of?
They're appropriations, the new appropriations. We have a bottom line, the, as you know, the levy limit.
Yeah.
We are leaving, I believe, if you should look at the LA 5, we're leaving somewhere about $2,074 on the table, because you're trying to balance 173 million, and that, that comes out when you press the recap button, and that's what they, according to the state. So, we're leaving about $2,074, but that's being covered in the appropriations.
Okay, they're all coming, this, these are all coming through the appropriations, correct?
Appropriations, right.
Also, as far as the computers that are being designed, the programs, don't other cities and towns have these programs already in place?
As far as the design of the 40U, it's a new law, what they do have, is there are companies out there that do have a 40U program. Problem being is, it comes to a point, and all of a sudden, everything is manual. And once you get to the manual system, reconciliation is going to be a dog. So, rather than have that problem, we actually employ the services of the computer company governed, and what will happen is that those, because they have the collection software for the city, and that portion, and we will actually have them integrate, we're having them, they're pretty much there, to actually integrate it into the software, so that there's no chance of manual mistakes. And that's what we want to get out of.
The manual mistakes, right?
Yeah, manual mistakes.
I just want to make sure, sure we're not creating something that's already in existence in maybe the city of Boston, or some of the more advanced cities in the Commonwealth. So, yes, saying no, right?
No, we're saying no. We went, as I said, there was a meeting of inspectional service directors down in Worcester, three or four months ago, and what we got back from that was the only ones were to integrate a system, because what they did is, they viewed the different packages.
Yeah.
And myself and the team is also viewed the different packages, and they get to a point, and then all of a sudden, it's just not worthwhile because of the...
Okay.
...amount of reconciliation that has to be done.
Mr. President, if I could just also respond.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This has been a work in progress, this 40U. We've been working on this for a long time, and we could have rolled it out, as, as George had alluded to, we could have rolled it out much sooner with a lesser software. I, I'd just like to, I guess, preface, we're talking 40U, and for a lot of you, I don't know if you all understand what this is going to mean, but essentially, we have a lot of tickets that have been issued, and if somebody contests it, they can contest it right now in Chelsea District Court. And there's a two-year, three-year backup. Some of these cases are never heard, and therefore, the city is not rece, you know, so people are just essentially saying, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to pay it, and, and it could go on for years. With the 40U, we can do, as opposed to going to Chelsea Court, we're going to have our own hearings officer, and we'll be bringing up, our goal is, right now, to bring up an ordinance to you to approve this whole 40U procedure. And we plan on doing that, but we don't want to, you know, we don't want to put it before you before we have everything, you know, all of our ducks in a row. This software that we're preparing right now is going to be, as far as we're, as far as we know, and as far as we're told, will be the only state in Massachusetts that will have it hooked up directly with regards to our, our tax collection. So, if somebody, for example, owes a fine, hasn't paid it, they go in for a permit, it's all going to be interactive. So, they will not be able to get a permit to do anything, or a license to do anything, if they owe fines. So, it's going to give the city a lot more flexibility, and, you know, but again, it's taken longer than we had hoped, but at the end of the day, I think it's going to be something that's going to benefit the city in a very positive way. So, I just wanted to articulate that.
Do we actually go and get a, hire our own inspectional director who makes the decisions on these?
A hearings officer, yeah, yeah. And we have, I haven't put him up for you for any formal appointment, but we have been speaking with Bob Mara, who all of you know. He served on our licensing board for a while. At one point, he was our city solicitor, and so, you know, we believe he would be a terrific choice as a hearings officer.
Absolutely.
But, again, that will come before you at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Judge. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Counsel Haas, Counsel Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is on the rec center, based on the split cost percentage. How was, is that determined based, was that determined based on call volume, response?
On call rate.
Now, how long was this agreement for with Winthrop?
The agreement lasts for a number of years. It has been modified, which will be modified. But it's until one of the parties says, okay, I don't want to be involved in it anymore. And then there's also language in the inter-ministerial agreement that says, if you want to back out, what happens is that you have to go through this full procedure, and you have to make the other city or town hold before you can back out. So, Winthrop has been a strong partner in this, and I think both police chief, both the police chief and the fire chief will tell you that. I, I know that Eugene Dougherty's part, he's been very successful as far as getting a fire chief. And, I don't know, I'm not used to calling him Eugene Dougherty. In fact, I looked up the other day his email address, and I kept getting some bounce back, because I was putting G. Dougherty instead of the E. Dougherty. So, I apologize if I seem, chief. But the other part of it is, is that what happens is, pardon me?
What?
No, looking good. But, getting frustrated. But the other part of it is, is again, is that they did a study, we have a consultant onboard, IXP, who has done this in a number of states. In fact, we had a meeting with the president of the company a few months ago. And what they've done, it's been handling it as far as the construction, and the governance of it, and the actual figuring the numbers in the budget for it. So, it wasn't done to budget for it, it was actually done, because the city itself does not have any other say other than the representatives it has on there. But I was involved somewhat in the budget because, just because I was involved with the process since the beginning. So, but everybody has done a great job on it, and it worked very hard. The police and the fire chief from Winthrop has done, they've done an excellent job, and it's a great working group. And I think it's, it'll add quite a bit to public safety.
So, basically, this is a negotiation on good merits, there, there's no timeline to it?
No, there's no timeline to it, and again...
So, can, is this, this percentage can change down the road, based, who's monitoring the call volume?
Call volume will be monitored by the advisory board, again, which we have our representative on, the mayor, the police chief, and the fire chief. It'll be monitored by them, and the same thing is part of the agreement, that, you know, as it gets monitored and as it changes, the percentages of our contribution will change. But they did a study on it, and the IXP came up with the amount of 75-25, so that's the portion that we're paying right now. But they, maybe after a year's worth of work, they can look at it again and see. But again, the best benefit is if another city or town comes in with it, because your economy is scaled. Now, all of a sudden, it comes into play. So, if you get two, three, four, I think after you go to a certain point, you're going to need money for a new building, because we don't have the space at the police station, but that's something we can apply, I believe we can apply. The, the two chiefs will probably be better at this than I am, is that apply for money for construction of a building. So, that's what we're looking at.
Now, how often is a report created or generated that shows the call, call response?
Oh, they can, that can be generated on a monthly basis. But they can't, you know, the cost of our percentages, you know, you're not going to be changing them on a monthly basis. But if you find if it's so exorbitant, I mean, really, the, you know, the amount of call volumes, you know, it could flood... call volumes, you know, it could fluctuate, it probably fluctuates greatly during the summer, or somewhere at that point, both of us have beaches, both the city of Winthrop and the, excuse me, the town of Winthrop and the city of Revere. So, I mean, that's gonna be reviewed by that board, and if it gets to a point where they say, okay, it is, you know, the city of Revere is paying more than it should, that board will come up and say, our representatives on there will say, well, maybe there should be a change, but it's up to them to look at that.
Can the city council, councillors get a copy of a report? Can we have a copy?
A number of calls, that's something we're, I don't know if the advisory board wants to do that, I'm sure if that's brought before them, they can vote on it, but they can definitely...
Excuse me, Council President.
It's not a city council function anymore, it's not a city function, it's a entity function, it's an entity in and of itself. It does not have to report to the city council, or the city of Revere, or to the town of Winthrop, and that's one of the reasons why they made it a separate entity. State legislation, all across the state, has made this state entity. I know I've been in touch with the one that's in Higgin, it's called, believe it or not, the SREC, the South Shore Regional Emergency Call Center, and that's the same situation with them, and I've looked at all the legislation for them, and they always make them a separate entity, because, again, when you have two cities, or a city or town, the authority has to be with the administrative boards that they have, but, you know, there's no reason why we can't ask the administrative board if they want to look at that, and that's up to them. But that's beyond my control, and that's beyond anyone in this room's control, because, again, it's a board, and they have the vote on it, and it's a separate entity altogether. The employees of the rec center are not employees of the city of Revere, or the town of Winthrop, they are employees of the rec center, which is a separate entity. It'd be the same as, I know in the budget, you pass a enterprise fund, it's not the same as that, because those employees are still employees of the, it's more like the city of Revere and the housing authority, it's the same as that, whereas they're not, they don't go by the vote of the city council, so that's the way that works. So, whether or not they want it, it's up to them, I'm sure you can make a request, but it's not something I can answer for, or the police or the fire chief can answer for, it has to be taken up at the vote of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Morabito. Counsel Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. George, I was intrigued by the word integration that you used regarding the 40-U ticket system. I'm wondering whether this integration is going to actually assist us in integrating the information that's in the possession of the assessors with the integration that's in the possession of the, with the information, rather, that's in the possession of the, of the special, the inspectional services, because this has long been a problem whereby the assessors don't know what is properly permitted by the, by the inspectional services and vice versa. Is this something that's going to be a feature of the, of this integration?
Well, that is, it definitely is, because, first of all, the inspectional service department has to have available to it the records of the assessors department, and vice versa, so looking at it, they'll definitely be contacted and noted. I think the, what you're looking at further, if there's building permits that are issued, building permits, we are in the process of actually doing that with govern on, on a different level. That process was actually started a number of years ago, but it was stopped because of the fact that we, the city hall was closed on every Friday, and then half-days Friday, and then personnel cuts, but now we're getting back to the same staffing level, we're addressing that again, and that process is still ongoing, and is ongoing at the same time, at the parallel with the 40-U, so that the assessors will be apprised of exactly what the, what the building permits are being handed out. And they also have a, they also have, this administration has put a representative of the board of assessors onto the, what's that, to the site plan review committee, so that he can see even before something is permitted, exactly what's on the books and what's coming in, so we've given, you know, that gives us a hand up on things.
Thank you. Perhaps at some point down the road, you can give us a report on that, because I'd be very interested in finding out when that's, finding out when that work is essentially completed, because I think it's going to help us keep much better track of permitting and assessing and values, property values, increases in property values in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Riordan. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to make note of the fact that, I know the mayor mentioned Bob Mara is a hearings officer, and I think he's overly qualified, if anything, and he's a pretty fair guy, and I'm sure will do an excellent job. I just heard someone say that they're not gonna be employees of the city of Revere, is that correct?
The rec center will be an entity in and of itself, it'll pass in the legislation, I forget the number of the legislation, 1141, was that the name of that number, something like that, that was passed this July.
Just one question comes to my mind, you know, health insurance-wise, are we gonna be, is the city gonna be picking up their health insurance?
Well, here's what's happening. As far as the rec center is concerned, they'll be taking care of their own workers' compensation, their own unemployment insurance, and we've allowed them to become part of our, of our health insurance program, because the data will be ridiculous, ridiculously expensive, however, Winthrop will be paying a portion of that, Winthrop will be kicking in a portion of that.
Twenty-five percent, am I correct?
Twenty-five percent of whatever their contribution is.
Yeah, so is that, is that part of this, you know?
That's part of the IMA.
Okay, all right.
That's one of the things we had a straight...
Yeah, I guess my next question is for Chief Doherty, and you can answer right from the chair there. Is this gonna allow us to free up any firefighters that are four, okay? Is, my hope is that, you know, with four firefighters freed up, perhaps we could get a little more money from the mayor, and at least put that engine two back in service during peak periods, when Knott's Shore Road, 1A, is, has all those cars on it, and it's very difficult for ladder trucks to get through the boulevard, or not, not that they don't, because they do, but they're very cumbersome, and it's very difficult for them to get to those high-rise apartments, particularly on the boulevard, when they get there, there's another minute and a half, two or three minutes involved in getting up to the floor where the medical emergency might be. So, my hope would be that that happens, four firefighters freed up, little more money, at least during peak hours, and I know the chief, I'm sure the chief would love to do this, he's always indicated he would, he's 100, 100% public safety, okay? So, maybe that's something we can discuss. With that said, I intend to support this tonight, but I can tell you, I'll be, you know, looking for a little reward down the road with regard to engine two. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. I believe that's everybody.
If I can make one more comment, if I would.
Go right ahead.
On the workers' comp, the reason that amount is in there, it's self-explanatory. I had made an agreement as a workers' comp agent to buy out the medical benefits of two people who moved on to distant retirement. The reason for doing this, and talking to our consultant, CCSMI, was that it saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, because, as you know, on workers' comp, even though we still be responsible for their medical once they go on to retirement, and, you know, the different ages of the people, being some of younger age, would leave the city to a exposure, as far as that was concerned, and I believe that, you know, making those, making that settlement was in the best interest of the city, and both the attorney for the city, Vincent Tintindo, and Debbie Brothers of CCSMI, both were in agreement with the settlement, it was negotiated, and it was definitely not the amount they originally had asked for, so they thought it was best that they just continue with allowing, having the city pay their workers' compensation. So, that's full explanation for everything on that requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Director, and I just want to quickly note that we did not realize the 300,000 to 400,000 in growth that we will receive from Thrifty very soon. It wasn't here quick enough to show and grow for this fiscal year, is that correct?
No, we actually have it on there. They registered over 600 cars.
Okay.
And I know you had thought doing that, and appreciate it, and what they did is that they did register, and they did put an amount for collections in the page three of the recap sheet under line one, which is the excess tax collection.
Good.
So, thank you again.
Great, thanks. Adam Clark.
Shall the city council raise and appropriate that fiscal year 2015 budget as follows? Emergency communication center operations account by $270,000, the computer operations fund by $117,526, and the workers' compensation account by $115,000. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriations have been made, approved. Shall the city council approve the cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2015 for statutory exemption forms 17D and 41C in the amount of 1.37%? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the cost of living adjustment has been approved. Shall the city council accept the provisions of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986, as amended by Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the provisions have been accepted. And shall the city council approve the minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2015? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the minimum residential factor for FY 15 has been approved.
On suspension of the rules, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
There's a takeable late communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Mr. Leonard Pagliaro as the electrical inspector, and communication from the mayor requesting a waiver of the residency requirement in accordance with Revere revised ordinances, section 2.06, .060B, for Mr. Leonard Pagliaro of Swamp Scott, Mass.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The communication essentially speaks for itself. As you all probably know, Mike Conley has resigned his position as wiring inspector. He did a terrific job for the city, was always very accessible, treated the public with respect, and obviously, his services were very much appreciated, and he'll be obviously missed by, by the administration and, and people that had the opportunity to work with him. But, that being said, I'd like to fill the position with Leonard Pagliaro. I've known Lenny for a long, long time. He is a quality guy that does tremendous work, has run his own company now for many years, has a very successful business, and I might add, has done inspections for the city as an assisting wiring inspector for a number of years, all for free. He's never charged the city whenever he's been needed, whether it's during the week, at night, on a weekend. Lenny Pagliaro has been there for the city if Mike Conley wasn't able to take the inspection, or was on vacation, or was sick or otherwise, and so I highly recommend Lenny Pagliaro for this, and would hope that the city council would approve his appointment. I know I just put it up today, so I don't know what the procedure is.
December, November 17th will be appointment subcommittee meeting.
Okay, so, but I did want to at least come up here, in case I can't make it for the subcommittee meeting, I wanted you to know that, you know, I highly recommend him for this position. He and his family have been staples in the Revere community for decades, and I think he would represent the city in a very, very professional and positive way.
Great choice, Mr. Mayor. Back to the regular business.
Calendar item number four, communication from Heather Segal Demoro relative to addressing the council on the truck convoys using Winthrop Parkway.
Placed on file.
Calendar item number five, communication from Joseph A. Festa proposing to donate land for conservation purposes on Bates Street.
Any councillors?
Mr. President.
Counsel Guanasso.
President, Bates Street's in Ward Three, and Douglas Street, the next one, calendar item number six, is in Ward Three. Is there a body this should appear before, or can we just review this? Does this go before land review?
It could, it could be sent to land seals, but under the circumstances, it's a donation to conservation.
Okay, I mean, I just wanted to know.
I think we could probably vote on it tonight, if you so, if you chose to.
Well, I don't have any opposition with, with either proposal, so I'm just...
You're the ward councillor, and so if you put a motion forward to vote on this tonight, I'd be in favor of it.
I would make a motion to approve.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Shall the city council accept a donation of land from Joseph A. Festa for conservation purposes, as described as lots 45, 46, 47, and 48 Bates Street? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas. Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the land donation has been accepted. Calendar item number six, communication from Joseph A. Festa Jr. and John V. Festa proposing to donate land for conservation purposes on Douglas Street.
Motion approved.
Shall the city council accept a donation of land from Joseph A. Festa Jr. and John V. Festa as, for conservation purposes, described as Douglas Street, lots 206, 207, 208, and 209? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the land donation has been accepted. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfski that the mayor requests the DCR to install a new sidewalk on Ocean Avenue between 376 Ocean Ave and Beach Street. This request is being made due to injuries to local pedestrians. Copies of the motion shall be forwarded to the state delegation.
Counsel Novoselfski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, first, I'd like to add, Counsel Morabito to this motion. There was an incident on, several weeks ago, with a pedestrian that lives at 376, and she fell and hurt herself, and I thank Counsel Morabito for helping and being there and stopping to aid her during her situation, but it is a bad sidewalk, and it's a DCR issue, so we would like to move it through the city and get it through state delegation, and move on to DCR, and hopefully, they'll take care of it. of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Morabito.
Thank you, councillor Novoselsky, yes. The street is, just the pavement is, needs to be replaced. I was driving by, I noticed a pedestrian on the, on the ground. I pulled over my car and I called nine-one-one. She was really injured. She was taken away by ambulance and there was actually a remaining part of a sign on the sidewalk which councillor Ira Novoselsky had DCR remove, but the pavement on the road is still in terrible condition and needs replacement immediately.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted.
The late motion presented by councillors Rigo and Riordan, excuse me. That the Public Works Subcommittee be charged with preparing an agenda for the previously proposed water and sewer summit. Said agenda is to include a proposed date and time for the summit, the determination of a list of questions to be submitted in advance of the proposed summit to the Water and Sewer Department, the superintendent of Public Works, the city planner, and CDM Smith, and any other contractors involved with the implementation of water and sewer remediation with respect to the city's consent agreement with the EPA, and any and all other issues necessary to successfully convene the proposed summit.
Councillor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, we all, we're all aware of this, the issue around, or the issues around water and sewer, and the idea of a summit was put forward some time ago. We thought it'd be good to put some guidelines and make sure that people submit questions in kind of an orderly fashion so that we can have a thorough and comprehensive conversation rather than kind of a back and forth that we can get into. So with that, it pretty much speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, in addition to councillor Rigo's comments, and I, I'll give it a little background because we've all been here when we've had CDM Smith up here and every, these, they're all very hardworking and mostly informative people, but we ask them certain questions and then it's turnaround, they look at each other, they don't have answers for us, and they say, I'll get back to you. And, and maybe they do, maybe they don't, maybe it gets forgotten. I don't know, but it seems to me that we have yet to have a real, really informative session up here regarding this consent decree, which is essentially halfway done at this point, or should be, at least halfway through it. And I think it's time that we've had, we had some really pointed questions and pointed answers. And I'd ask that this go to the Public Works Subcommittee, Mr. President, and that meeting be convened by councillor Haas at some point in the fairly near future so we can get this on the agenda, hopefully sometime, if not by the end of the year, certainly by the early part of, of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I'm going to talk on a different matter, a personal privilege.
Yes, I thought you were going to talk on this matter.
No.
All right. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. Oh, wait a minute. Councillor Penta, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I actually think, I actually think it's a great motion and, you know, you save a lot of time and effort on this because I've been talking to the city auditor, I've been talking to the financial director, I've been talking to actually Bob Buttons, and you call, ask information, they'll get back to you and just as of today, I've asked a lot of questions with George Anzoni, but last time I talked to Bob Buttons, I guess there's an annually report that they get from the EPA, from MWRA, and a lot of the stuff, and you're supposed to get back to them with a date when all that stuff is supposed to be in. It's a comprehensive report that they get every year and it's a lot of information on there, so I think that date, when he gets all that stuff, and I'm hoping it's soon, I'm not sure of the date, but I think it's a great motion, you know, in the, you said in the scheme of saving some time, it's very good. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Councillor Patch, I'm to point of information.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just spend a minute talking about the St. Mary's Fields. It was, I've gotten, I usually don't like concerning rumors, but I've got several phone calls and people in the street. A rumor going around that St. Mary's Fields is not going to get done. It, it is in my ward and first of all, it has to be done because it was transferred, that's the only way, Hill Park could have, the school could be built on Hill Park. Also, I went to the mayor's office this morning, explained to him what, you know, the rumors are, and I was made aware that the city executed an engineering and design contact, contract with CDM Smith in September of two thousand fourteen and, and for the reconstruction of three ballparks including lightning, irrigation, fencing, bleaching, concession stands, tarp lot, and parking area for St. Mary's Fields. The mayor is in the process of completing survey work and preparing primary design plans over the last months and had, had several meetings with, with his field design committee comprised of Frank Strangie, Paul Agenzio, Nick Rice from Michael Hinorozzo, and Sean I'm told the final design in construction documents should be completed this winter and the project is expected to go out and bid in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, but hopefully with construction starting in July. So I want to put everybody's minds to rest here so that, you know, it's, unfortunately, you know, they're, they're doing the school and they're doing the stadium first and I'm sure when St. Mary's is done, everybody will be happy and proud of what the city did there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Patch, for that point of information. Happy to hear that St. Mary's Fields are going to be built. Couple of pieces of business here. Obviously tomorrow is election day, a very important election for the state and for the country. I hope everybody's going to get out and vote. Next week, we certainly remember our, all our veterans and the city council will be adjourned until eleven seventeen.
Mr. President, before you gavel, if I may-
Councillor Novoselsky.
Regarding Veterans Day.
Go right ahead.
The city has had the honor to do a Veterans Day program for the last eleven years. It had been weak for the fifteen years before that and the committee that I'm on with Nick Boehr and Dennis Michella and Al Trimanello have put this program together and we hope that, and let everybody know that this Saturday, we're having a Veterans Day program at the Beachmont VFW on Bennington Street, five o'clock. It's a dinner dance to go with it and we'll have the ROTC there give out some awards to our veterans and those people supporting our veterans and we'll be dancing to Alan Lobello. It's fifteen dollars a ticket. Anybody wants tickets, I can see myself, Alan, Al Trimanello, Nick Boehr, Dennis Michella. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, councillor Novoselsky. Again, get out and vote tomorrow. City council stands adjourned until eleven seventeen.